Multi-purpose ranges shown C, D, and E. A long range for longer shooting in B. And then a smaller pistol range, and they can explain to applicants the specifics, showing where the cursor is down at the bottom there.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? At this time, we're going to open up the public hearing, and I have consulted with the attorneys on both sides. And we're going to give the attorneys five minutes to speak. And based upon the number of persons that signed up, we'll have a balance of only 10 minutes on each side to speak. So please, if you are the first speaker, please take into consideration and be respectful for the speakers behind you that we only have 10 minutes in total after the attorneys have given their presentation. By protocol, normally we allow the proponents to go first, and then we'll have the opponents at the end. So at this time, I am going to open the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, we'll call on the attorney for the proponent. And could you read that, please?
I believe that is Charles Meeker.
Yes, ma'am clerk.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Charles Meeker. I'm with the Parker Poe Law Firm in Raleigh, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Tiger Swan Incorporated. Tiger Swan was recruited to Cumberland County by your Chamber of Commerce because this site is so large, it is particularly well-suited to have a firing range there. This site, as has been mentioned, is 978 acres. That's one and a half square miles. It's a very, very large site. Cumberland County, in the text amendment you adopted last June, has, as far as I know and Mr. Lloyd knows, the most restrictive firing range ordinance in this state. Your ordinance requires a minimum size of 200 acres. This is over four times that size. And this is really a tremendous site. And the advantage of this is that the surface danger zones can be contained entirely on the site, as has been shown, and also that the firing range is so far away from other adjoining uses that noise is not a problem. In addition, the firing occurs inside of earthen berms that are 12 to 15 feet high and very thick, and also capture the noise as well as any shots that don't hit the target. So this site is very large. It is particularly well-suited for a firing range. It's remotely located, and that's the reason Tiger Swan was asked to come here to have its firing range. In terms of the recent text amendment, you'll hear from a minute from Gordon Rose, a registered professional engineer here in Fayetteville, that this plan meets all the requirements of that text amendment. And that's one of the requirements, that you have an engineer make that certification, and he is making that certification, has made it, and will confirm that to you tonight. If there's any problem with that, he can respond to that. As mentioned by Mr. Lloyd, there's been no violation of any of the regulations so far by Tiger Swan, but a judge, or actually two judges, have ruled that the ordinance prior to your text amendment in June didn't allow for this kind of use in this A-1 zoning district. And thus, the commission adopted the text amendment in June so that this kind of use could occur in an A-1 district, and this is an A-1 district. And that's the reason the conditional use is before you tonight. Now, in terms of who you'll hear from, there are a number of speakers, most of them are from the area, who will talk about the suitability of this site for a firing range. Indeed, this firing range has been operated now for three years under previous permits, and we hope to operate going forward. Contentions as to excessive noise simply are not confirmed by those who have been to the site. It's just not the case. In addition, as mentioned before, the Joint Planning Board requested an additional condition, and that is that firing only occur between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on most days, and up to five days a month, it can occur in the evening from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., but never after 10:00 p.m., and on most days, it stops at 5:00 p.m. We have gotten a lot of support. Tiger Swan has a tremendous amount of support in the community. If I could, I'd like to hand up to the clerk a letter from the president of K-3, also petitions that have been signed by approximately 740 people in the area, and also there are approximately 4,500 additional signatures that have come in on the Internet from people from outside. So if I could pass that, the clerk would like to do so. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the presentation on behalf of Tiger Swan. We respectfully submit that the application submitted meets all the requirements of the text amendment, and it is a particularly suitable location. It fits in very well, and it's one that should be authorized by this board. Now with that, I would like to start with the witnesses, and Madam Clerk, I don't know if we can call Mr. Rose first, but anyway, he'll be called fairly soon if he's not first on the list.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Meeker. If we could, Madam Clerk, could we reset the clock for 10 minutes? And Mr. Meeker, if you will, make yourself available for any questions afterwards. Okay, at this time... Is he there? Madam Clerk, again, please be respectful of the other speakers and respectful of the opposing side of which it will. We have 10 minutes. How many speakers do we have, Madam Clerk?
In favor of, we have 11. In opposition to, we have nine.
Okay. I would ask that if everything that you wanted to say has possibly been said, that you may waive your time to someone else, so everyone gets a fair chance to speak if they would like to. So Madam Clerk, call the first speaker, please.
Our first speaker in favor is Mr. Chris Bostock.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bostock.
Good evening, Chairman Keith, fellow commissioners. My name is Chris Bostock. I live in Fayetteville in Cumberland County. I am the volunteer chair of the Economic Development Alliance of Fayetteville, Cumberland County, and past chair of the Fayetteville Regional Chamber of Commerce. You all have gotten to know me in that role, and I've been honored to get to know you in that role, as we all have worked together to attract business capital investment and jobs into our community. Last week, our local headlines were really a testament in the Fayetteville Observer about how difficult and delicate that job is. Changes in the marketplace, changes in the capital markets, changes, mergers and acquisitions can cause companies to retrench their operations and can cause a community to lose its corporate citizens, often for reasons beyond their control. Tonight, I'm here for something that you can control. Tonight, you have an item before you that, if you approve it, will allow a local company, Tiger Swan, to continue to grow and prosper. On behalf of the Alliance Board of Directors, I would ask that you approve their zoning application for the following reasons. One, Tiger Swan is heavily recruited by Cumberland County in 2009 with the chamber, as already been stated. Part of Tiger Swan's business is military contracting. Military contracting is a growing business in our community. This industry fits strategically with our community's efforts to grow jobs and capital investment in our community. Tiger Swan's business attracts retirees from the military who want to settle here and want to settle here locally and not move to another area. In short, this is the perfect business for our region. Failure to approve this zoning application would force this company to go out of business, its owners to lose their capital investments, and its employees to lose their jobs. In addition, the denial of their application would send a very negative message to other businesses in our region that are considering investing into our community and creating jobs for our citizens. As our county leaders, you know that this community is open for business. I urge you to approve their zoning request so this business can continue to grow and prosper. Thank you.
Thank you. Stop the clock, please. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bostock. There is 7 minutes and 30 seconds left. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Breeden Blackwell.
And Mr. Blackwell, if you could be considered as some of the other speakers afterwards. And I must point out, honorably served as a commissioner for many years, Dr. Blackwell. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Your job is a tough job. When these people leave here tonight, about half of them aren't going to be happy, and you know that. But Tiger Swan is not a new issue for you. It came before you in 2009 when I sat where you sit. So this is not a new issue for you. I've done a little research on Tiger Swan to find out they've invested over $1.3 million in this firing range and improvements. They have 10-plus employees, and lady and gentlemen, if you approve this, there'll be 20 more employees. Now, you may say, "Well, that's not a big deal." But look, when you pay a salary of $70,000 to $120,000 for employees, that's pretty big business for Cumberland County. Mr. Bostock said it well. You approve all economic development for this county. We are open for business. Tiger Swan is a good business, and we urge you to support their zoning request.
Thank you, Dr. Blackwell. The next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Hunter Glass.
Hi, my name's Hunter Glass. I'm a public speaker by job. I am a consultant, but I have no current business dealings with Tiger Swan. A couple of years ago, I heard about Tiger Swan. I lived in the area. I live off of John Hall Road, approximately three miles, as the crow flies, from the range. I came to one of the meetings here. There was a lot of craziness going on and a lot of bizarre accusations, and I had heard so many things about these Rambo Nazis out here that I wanted to meet them, and I did. I went out and I met with this gentleman right here. Mr. Reese actually came out and met with me, and we had coffee at the Waffle House, which serves horrible coffee. And I have forgiven him for that, but what I'm here to say is, I've heard a lot about the sound and the noise, and I'll be honest with you, I really just don't hear it. And I'm not deaf, and I'm only three miles away. I do hear a lot of gunfire from my neighbors, and they got a lot of yahoos on Nacourt that fire AK-47s on a regular basis. And the only time I've ever been threatened by a round was somebody hunting illegally on my property. So I will tell you, though, that, as was said just a few minutes ago, consulting is the future. And I will tell you that I travel all over this country constantly. You can please look me up. I have no problems putting my hand on a Bible here for you, but I travel all over the country, speak with literally thousands of agencies, law enforcement agencies, that would absolutely die to have such a training facility near them, because training equals safety. And if you don't really believe that this country is under attack, then you've sadly mistaken yourself. And these guys out here are the best. There's no slack-offs or anything like that. You've got the cream of the crop out here, and that is an issue that we really need to pay attention to, because we're talking about officers' lives, we're talking about your lives, we're talking about our fellow neighbors' lives, and this is an important factor, and this is going to be here. Consulting is the way of the future, and God bless it that we have all these people here in Cumberland County. And I would like to say, if anybody needs to comment, contact me on that. I have absolutely no problem coming before anyone and speaking to you freely in reference to anything that I've said tonight and the honesty behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass.
Our next speaker is Mr. Gordon Rose.
Good evening, Gordon. I understand you're an engineer, but you will be available for any commissioners who may have questions, if they want to get specific.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I'm Gordon Rose. I'm with Call Sign Engineers. We did the original layout for Tiger Swan based on the Department of the Army's range safety criteria. When you changed the criteria in June of this year, we went back and looked at it again, and I can tell you that the surface danger zones, based on the calibers that I've been told are being fired, do fall within the property controlled by Tiger Swan, and it does meet the criteria, your requirements that you've passed recently. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rose. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Virgil, no last name.
Is there Virgil? Ms. Shat, if you please.
If not, we can call on Scott Manning.
Okay. Mr. Scott Manning.
My apologies, I skipped over Bishop Simmons.
Skip.
Or Simons?
Simmons.
Simmons.
Mr. Manning will get right to you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
How's everyone tonight?
Excellent.
I'm Bishop Simmons. I'm the bishop of Upper Room Prayer House, holding this church less than a mile from the range. Praise God, just about a mile from that range. And I also live in Cumberland County, Cedar Creek, on Highway, the Cupless Road, off between 53 and 210. And I've been living there for years, praise God. In other words, this is my original home, 50 years, praise God, owning the property that I own there on Cupless Road there. And Tiger Swan, it comes out of the community, praise God, about... How many years was it? Five? About five years ago. And we have found no fault in this business of Tiger Swan, praise the Lord. Only thing that we say is that if we need anything, the church and the community, he is available. In other words, he have hired some of the people out of the community there to work on this business he have back there. And in time, praise God, we were saying, when we had a problem back here last, one of our members, house quarter fire and burnt, the first people that came was people from Tiger Swan over there and help control that fire, get it out. And sometime, praise God, and we'll say again, I've been there for more than, say, about at least seven years down here, down here, but at the church, seven years at the church. And we don't have any problem with Tiger Swan. Now, I said this, we, myself and my wife and Upper Room Prayer House owner in the church, we are feeding 240 people from Cumberland County, some from Sampson County, and some from Bladen County. We, by the county, we get donations, switch of food from the food bank, and we take it over there, we process it, box it up, and we deliver some of it to the people that cannot make, have no transportation for the sake, no way to get out. We deliver that. But the others, they come out and pick it up. If you come down to our place there...
Please, the room, Bishop, for a second. You stop the clock, please. If you could finish up your thought real quick, we have other speakers, and we're running out of time. Thank you, Bishop.
Our next speaker...
How many more speakers do we have?
We have additional four speakers.
Okay, we've got 51 seconds left.
Our next speaker is Mr. Scott Manning.
Mr. Manning.
Thank you.
More than welcome, Mr. Manning. I appreciate your patience.
You're welcome. I'm the president of the Stedman Gun Club and also represent the gunpowder gals. We have a sport that's called recreational sport shooting of paper targets, and we meet out at Tiger Swan, because we do recreational sport of shooting. As a sport, we only shoot in approved areas. It is not in somebody's backyard, and it's not in somebody's residential housing community, just like playing a sport of golf. You have a golf course you go to. We have a range, a designated range that we go to, and it's Tiger Swan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Our next speaker is Stuart Pressey.
Mr. Pressey, I apologize, but we're very limited on time, but please.
Okay, I'll make it real brief. Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
I'm the owner of the property that's up for rezoning, and I'd like to approve that, that it's okay to rezone the property. I'd like to speak on behalf of Mr. Jim Reese, CEO of Tiger Swan. I'll be very brief. The chamber contacted me about several companies that were coming to this location, and all I can say is it's an honor to have Mr. Reese on the property and Tiger Swan and his employees. And when we go home at night, we need to lay our heads on our pillows, and thank God that we got people like this in the community to be there for us.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I truly apologize to some of the speakers who may not have been able to speak, but we're going to go to the other side, the opponents, on this. And at this time, Madam Clerk, I'd like to call the attorney.
Would that be Ms. Robin Curran?
Yes, ma'am. Welcome, Ms. Curran, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, I'm Robin Curran. I'm an attorney, and I have been representing a group of neighbors for over three years now who live and/or own property in the area close to the property that is being sought to be rezoned. Those neighbors adamantly oppose the rezoning and ask that you deny it. Given our time limitations, I know we have people in the overflow room, but would ask the people who are here in this room who oppose the rezoning to please raise their Again, I want to be as brief as possible. We have been in court for three years. We have so far obtained two favorable rulings from the courts that have held that this use is prohibited at this location. So the investment so far, the money, the time, has all been put into a use that's never been permitted on this property, and we would like you to take that into account. There is a place for this particular facility. It's opposition that this is just not the right place for it. We know it's needed. We don't dispute that, but it is in an environment where there are people who live and work every day, and they will tell you that there is noise and that there is disturbance, and it does sound like a war zone, and they are very, very concerned for their safety. They're stressed out each day. So while it is a good idea to bring business to the county, you need to bring it to the right place and not to a place where there are numerous neighbors who are disturbed by it every day. I do want to talk very briefly. Mr. Lloyd told you that this court case has nothing to do with your decision today. I respectfully disagree with that. I think it is very important to listen to what the court has said. Three years ago, we started, it was classified as a school. We went all the way to the Superior Court of North Carolina. There was a holding, it is not a school. This is not an appropriate use for this zoning district. As soon as we got out of court, we got another ruling from the county that said it's outdoor amusement for profit with mechanized vehicles. We spent another year, about a year and four months, in court. Just last month, we went to court and prevailed again. So we have been correct each time. And I do want to point out what that court said just within the last week, and it's basically that the Tiger Swan facility is a vocational school. The amendment to the ordinance did not change the definition of a vocational school. It says it is a prohibited use at this location. The evidence in the record says it fits within the definition of a vocational school, and the Board of Adjustment aired in allowing it to go forward. While the ordinance was amended, it is our unequivocal position that if you approve this rezoning today, that the Tiger Swan facility is still a vocational school according to the Superior Court of North Carolina in Cumberland County, and they cannot operate that school there. What they can operate is a shooting range, which is what they do on Saturday. So we would ask that you either turn it down or you wait until this has meandered its way through the court again, and you know for sure that what you are approving is something that they can do. And I respectfully submit that it's not. There was an opportunity to allow vocational schools. You chose not to do that. There would be an opportunity to allow this specific use. This wasn't done. Instead, this rezoning category allows something that a court says this particular establishment is not. Finally, I want to, I'm not going to talk about the impact on the neighbors, except to say that they can follow up on that. I do want to hand up one thing. Mr. Keith Barnes, who was a Realtor, is going to speak today. This is the original and some copies. He will tell you that he has been to the site, he has investigated it, and that this particular use will significantly damage the values of the properties of the people who live there. The application that was filled out by Tiger Swan specifically says, there is an acknowledgement that says that they have agreed to follow basically what the special use permit requirements are, and one of those things is that it cannot, it has to maintain or enhance the value of surrounding properties. It cannot be inharmonious with the area. We think if you listen to the rest of the people who speak tonight, that you'll find that's exactly the case. Finally, I do want to say, you have absolutely every right in the world to turn this down tonight. You are not bound, if they meet every single one of these requirements, rezoning is completely discretionary. That's the way you decided to do it, so you can turn it down tonight if you feel that these neighbors will be adversely impacted, if it will turn down, it will devalue their properties, if it's not an appropriate use at this location, you can do that. It is completely within your discretion, and we respectfully ask that you do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Curran.
I have questions.
Okay, please make yourself available. Okay, at this time, again, there'll be 10 minutes for any of the opponents to speak. If you happen to be first or second, please take into consideration your other speakers. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
Following Ms. Curran, we have an additional eight speakers.
We've got 10 minutes, and my North Carolina-based public school education says that's about a minute and 20 apiece. So let's do what we can to try to be fair. So Madam Clerk, will you call the first speaker, please?
I would call Mr. Kevin West.
Mr. West, was that Kevin?
Kevin, yes.
Kevin, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kevin West. My brother and I farm in the Cedar Creek community. We have property joining the Tiger Swan facility. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of these citizens that Ms. Curran recognized. We have many concerns, safety being one. I know you've seen the surface danger map. Those are not the ones we're worried about. My property is 100 yards from those shoot houses, and we're worried about an accident. We're not worried about everything being controlled, and we know that accidents often happen. Certainly, noise is a concern. We've listened to one range for three years now. We know what it sounds like. We're concerned about the proposed other ranges that are being proposed tonight. Our property values, I think common sense will tell you, if you want to buy property, you don't want to buy it by shooting range. That speaks for itself. Regulatory enforcement, we've already had neighbors seeing people from Tiger Swan shooting from their shoot houses across open fields, and that was not allowed at the time. And so we're worried about who's going to keep a check on Tiger Swan. It affects our everyday lives, our quality of life. It makes it where we can't enjoy our property the way that we would like to. Many residents don't want to go outside when they're having training days, and we're also concerned why our county seems so determined to allow this one business to operate and remain operational over the objections of the very people that are being the most adversely affected by its operation. We feel our elected officials, you folks, should represent us as residents of Cumberland County and not a landowner and a businessman that reside in another county. In addition, the application that they had to sign for this conditional use, there are certain things that must be met, criteria, and we certainly feel that some of them have not been met. First, it says will not materially endanger the public health and safety. We feel that not only physical, there's a mental and emotional health that comes along with hearing repetitive shooting consistently. Secondly, it says it will maintain and enhance the value of adjoining and abutting properties or that the use is a public necessity. We certainly don't think it's a public necessity, and we certainly don't think it's enhancing our property. Thirdly, it says they will be in harmony with the area in which it's to be located. We absolutely don't believe that it is in harmony with the area in which it is located. Speaking personally, as a farmer in the community in an A-1 district, we have our property listed as a register of deeds in the voluntary ag district in the county, and I have rights and a reasonable expectation not to have a military training facility by my property as a farmer, just like a business in town would have reasonable expectation not to have a hog farm or a turkey farm pop up beside them. We, as a group, are asking you finally tonight that you don't make us pay anymore for a mistake that we believe the county has made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West.
Our next speaker is Keith Barnes.
I believe Mr. Barnes was in the other room. Can you check, Ms. Shat? Here he comes. Keith, thank you very much.
Hey, I'm Keith Barnes.
Were you able to hear the, as time is left in the room?
Yes, this will be very brief.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barnes.
My name's Keith Barnes. I'm a licensed real estate broker in the state of North Carolina, have been for the last eight years. Our office is located in Stedman, North Carolina. We do handle residential and land sales in the area where Tiger Swan facility is located, and I'm not going to take a lot of time, because I'm just going to say something everybody already knows. I mean, there's no way that this could not have a negative effect on property values, so I'm simply saying that. I've been asked to share my professional opinion on the possible effects of the presence of Tiger Swan Range Complex on the value of surrounding properties. I've visited properties in the area which are adjacent and close to the Tiger Swan facility and analyzed whether, in my professional opinion, that facility will cause an adverse effect on the value of these properties. effect on the value of these properties, and it's my unequivocal opinion that it will. Simple, simple as that. That's all the time I need, I think.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barnes.